Hear ye, hear ye. The Hamlin County Commission Meeting is now in session. The Honorable Chris Cutshaw presents.
Thank you, Harley.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. We'll call our meeting to order for the January 19th, 2023 regular session of the Hamlin County Legislative Body. As we get started, Chairman Horner, could you please announce, Commissioner Horner, please announce our visitor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My honor, fairness, good to you, Jason Mike. I'm the person I've met as chair's members about six months. We're excited about the good leadership that our church also leadership everybody has had.
Would you lead us in prayer, sir?
Thank you, Tim. Thank you. Let me invite us to bow our heads together in prayer tonight. Holy God, we gather here tonight to do the work of this county. And Father, each of these who have been elected, what we pray over this evening? We pray that you would grant to them wisdom in their words, guidance. Father, we pray that you would grant to them care and compassion in their hearts for the people of this good county. Jesus, we pray that you would be present here in our city and our county to bless us. For God, we know that every blessing comes from your mighty hand. Father, you are kind and good to us in every way. We pray that, Lord, as conversations are carried out tonight, that they may be edifying and that, Lord, yours would be open to hear one another speak and that decisions would be made for the common good. Holy friend, we love you. We ask for your blessings here tonight and on all the people that are served by this legislative body. In your holy and precious name, we pray all these things. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Holland, could you lead us, please?
Yes, sir. So then, pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's call the roll, please. We have thirteen present of fourteen. We do have a quorum. We are open for business. So moving forward, Commissioners, if you would, turn your mics on. Let's have a good meeting. Item number one on our regular calendar. Commissioner Horner, could you please come to the well? Sheriff Mullins, could you please come to the well, sir?
I'd like to ask the Articulation Committee of the Chair to come board. We've all heard of Hansa Zero, and this is a group certainly certainly gets recognition that figures out. I personally know them all. They're in a different situation. I appreciate what they do. They're still also in a good recognition, they deserve it.
I just want to talk about these guys, their hard work and dedication to getting these little drugs off the streets, particularly that case that just happened that they spent months on, that we ended up receiving over $100,000 in cash. And in that seizure, we also took over $30,000 worth of pills that never hit the street. I just want to recognize that.
Thank you, Commissioner Horner. Sheriff Mullins, thank you. Item number two, we will entertain comments regarding business of the agenda only. If you would, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak.
My name is Charles Cook. I live at 1,006 Overlook Drive here in Morristown. I sent you all an email back in December about restricting or reducing the public speaking times at this meeting. And here we are now, and we've got it on the agenda. We've got a body, a whole Hamlin County government body of Republicans. You know, the party that's supposed to stand up and protect people's rights, the small government Republicans. Well, here we are. We're going to infringe on people's rights to come and address this body. Given the situation that this country is in today, you would think you'd be encouraging people to come up here and give them more time to speak instead of restricting what they do and making it more cumbersome for them to do it. But as I said, we've got a body of Republicans. Well, in the Bible, Book of Matthew, Chapter seven, verse 16 through 20, Jesus said, "You'll know them by their fruits."
Excuse me, sir. Can we silence that, please?
Yeah.
Sorry. Thank you for doing so.
You'll know them by their fruits. Well, today, we're going to find out how you vote, and you're going to identify to us what your fruits truly are. Are you going to be here for the people? Because remember, you asked for the seats that you're in. You asked the people to vote for you and put you in those seats. And now you want to restrict those same people opportunity to come here and speak. Man, talk about a stab in the back to the people who elected you. And I'll promise you this, you vote for this, and I will expose you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission?
My name is Lyndon Oy, Joe Stevens Road. Rules Committee, appointed by Chairman Chris Cutshaw, recommended on January 9th that public comments at county commission meetings be reduced from two, three-minute comment periods to one, three-minute comment period. Prior to the vote, there was no information published with committee packets about this plan, rules by ambush. Although the public was given no information, Rules Chairman Bobby Hahn had a list of rule changes at the ready, and the first proposal was to limit public comment opportunities at commission meetings. Not one commissioner that I know of ran on a platform or was elected to change the public comments to reduce the opportunities for the public to speak. But less than five months after taking office, there are now several commissioners supporting the Cutshaw-Hahn proposal. Why? Why the sudden push to limit public comments? Why? Why was there no information in the packets? Sadly, this is public rules by ambush and subterfuge. Keep the public in the dark, take a vote by a five-member committee, and don't let other commissioners present their ideas for a vote at the committee and bring it to the full commission. And many of those, including Mr. Cutshaw and Mr. Hahn, who voted or who are voting to cut public comments, were among those nine who voted, of a lover a year ago, to sue citizens.
That's not part of our agenda, ma'am.
It is related to that.
It is not.
To sue citizens wearing a piece of foam on their shirt.
It's not part of our agenda.
Revenge and retaliations against citizens, that's what this proposal is. Yeah, I think I'd watch it, Bobby. Just a bit of history of how we got here.
It's all right. Stop the clock, please.
How did we get here today?
That's enough. We're not talking about agenda items right now. We stopped the clock, and you may continue.
We are not talking about agenda. I thought this was a business of the agenda.
Ma'am, the jail is not part of our agenda tonight as far as what you're discussing.
This is public comments that were being made at commission meetings.
I disagree, ma'am. You're out of line.
Sue me.
I'm not going to sue Ms. Oy. I'm just saying you're out of line.
In 2020, this started restricting a shirt. That was a public comment.
You're putting me in a position that I have to make a call.
In 2021.
Yes, ma'am, you're out of line.
It started with a.
She is out of line. I'm sorry. She is out of order.
And a lawsuit.
You may sit down. May we have the next speaker, please?
No, I'm not through.
You are through. This line goes.
So we have anger and a vendetta against citizens who come and speak.
Again, you're out of order, ma'am. You're out of order.
I'm on the agenda on public comments.
Ma'am, you are, it's on agenda items, and this is not on the agenda.
Public comments is not on the agenda. Rules review.
Ma'am, this, this rules review is.
And that is about public comments, number A, 10A.
That's not what you're talking about.
Do you not know that?
I do, ma'am. Do you not know that?
That's what I'm talking about.
We're not talking about that.
Public comments, limiting public comments.
Is there anyone else that would like to address our commission?
Enjoy yourself because this is probably the last restrictive move, and Mr. Baker opposes
Mike Johncox, 3121 Three Springs Road. Public comments, I like to just see it as we're taxpayers, we have a right to be heard. If we have enough gumption to come to these committee and commission meetings, we should be heard.
Yes, sir.
Other than that, I really have no problem with it, agenda, non-agenda, but we should have the right to be heard.
Yes, sir.
And I hope you all, you know, and plus, if it's not broke, don't fix it.
Amen.
You know, I have not, I've been here for about two years coming to these meetings, and I've never seen a non-agenda comment with more than maybe a couple people. So I mean, I think it's a moot point to allot time if needed. So thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address our commission?
My name is Gwen Holden. I live at West Point in Talbot.
That's not your total address, please.
I'm doing just like Ms. Oy did.
I missed that. I apologize.
Well, you can miss mine, too.
I can't because I just caught it. We are asking for name and address, ma'am. And you've always done that, Ms. Gwen.
Yes, I have.
Yes, ma'am, and I'm asking you to.
8150 West Point Drive.
Thank you very much.
That's fine.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't care. I got nothing to add.
I know you don't.
I hope you all don't change the time. I've been coming here for nine years. I've got very little done because you all don't want to do anything for me except take my taxes. And I have to pay them. I wished I didn't because I sure don't get anything for it. I'd wished that you would not change the time. We need to let you know how we feel. And you know what? Even if you do change the time, it's still not going to stop us from talking. So you're still going to hear us. You're going to hear me till I'm dead. I promise. Because I've been a taxpayer all my life, I've worked all my life, and I got very little from Hamlin County. But now I love my county. I love my, I love my county. I take good care of it. I keep it clean. I believe in that. I believe in honesty and being truthful. And if you're not, God knows it.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission? Seeing none, we will move to item number three. We have an appointment that we must take up, and it's from the UT Ag Office. And the first one on, on the list, we've got three items that we'll need to take up. This is, well, we can do it together. If anyone opposes, then we'll back up. But what we have here is three appointments to Ag Extension to serve on the Ag Committee for our county. Number one is the farm woman, Civil District three, Donna Morris. This will be her second term. Also, the farm man, Civil District number two, Steve Miller, and farm man, Civil District four, Tom Rush. These three have been recommended by Mr. Bedwell from the UT Extension Office, and I'll take a motion.
Motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All right. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Item four, Chairman Doty, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 4A, we have approval of the consent calendar items, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on consent count, approval of consent counter items? Seeing none, let's vote this motion. Okay, we've got an error here. Can, can we take a look at this real quick, please?
It's actually, if I missed it, thank you.
You good?
She's fixing it.
Okay.
Sorry, honey. I apologize.
Soon as I have a clone.
No, you got mics, too. Oh, here we go.
I could have come down it. I'm sorry.
Thirteen ye, zero, nay.
And the motion passes. Chairman Doty.
Item 4B, it's approval of the regular calendar items, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Thirteen ye, zero, nay.
Motion passes.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Doty. And we'll move to item five. We have none. Item six, approval of consent calendar. I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Let's catch up. There we go. Now, do we, we've got a second, and is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Thirteen ye, zero, nay.
And the motion passes. Item seven, Justice Center Public Safety Committee Chairman Horner, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 7A, Change Order number nine, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Yes. Mr. Doty.
I just got a quick question. Mr. Mayor, did we run this one by our attorney in Knoxville that we have over this building, the one we contacted for our contracts to see how she felt about it, or?
No, we did not. It can't be caused. These changes all came from inspections. And they're really what many of these were thrown by other players.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Green.
Quick question. I'd like to know a little bit more about what the mayor was referring to as far as inspections. Was it because we weren't up to code? I mean, what was the reason?
I'll, I'll address this real quickly. To my knowledge, when Mr. Pettit addressed us, I asked that question, that very question, and it was state inspection. They did pre-inspections to begin with, and when they followed up, they're state inspections. They found some discrepancies, and we had to catch up to what they say we have to have. I ask is, should this not have been caught? He said it's before and after.
Well, my next question, would it have been in the original architect drawings? I guess is what I'm searching for.
Let's ask Mr. Pettit.
So the, it's not really inspections, it's code review.
Okay.
Typically, the process is the, you got your architect, they develop this design, read them their interpretation of the code. They send it off, and the state fire marshal views those drawings, and when they reviewed them, they caught these few things. But in the meantime, we bid the project. And then when it came back, then those things that the contractor bid weren't on the drawings, so the drawings had to catch up with the review of the state fire marshal's office.
The code had changed?
I'm not really sure if I'm smart enough to interpretate what they think the code is, but they caught these things, the enclosed shafts and fire rate separations.
No disrespect intended, sir, but for what we're paying for this, it needs to be perfect.
Well, I understand that, and we all wish it was, but like I said, the last time, we, and I'm not taking this disrespect, but we try to do our best to do it, and it'll happen again as they walk this job site in 12 months or so. They'll find things like exit signs and audible fire alarm systems that the state fire marshal will want moved or changed, and you will see some of that again. You would have seen this later on if they hadn't caught it now. It would have been more expensive then than now.
Is this something that they should have caught when they did the architectural drawings and everything? I'm just curious. I mean, my understanding, they had built jails. And I'll give you the example. I work for a living as a tax preparer. I know what I'm expected to do, so I double-check my stuff. So is it something they should have caught initially?
There is no way that they could catch it, an interpretation of a codes official and his interpretation of a storm drain. They just, they anticipated a lot of things, fire exits, firewalls, where fire doors go. They just didn't, this is what the state reviewer caught when he reviewed the drawings. And it was after the bid, so they had to, the contractor bid this set of drawings, now he's got to go and fire rate these walls, and contractor needs to be paid for the work. So your question about did the architect should have known? He didn't know, but he just interpreted the code differently, and the state fire marshal has the final say.
I'm glad it's not my money.
It's, it's all her money.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. We have a motion. We have a second to accept the change order number nine. Is there any more discussion? Let's vote this motion, please.
Twelve ye, one nay.
Motion passes. Let's move to item eight on the calendar, Finance Committee Chairman Bobby Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Finance Committee, 8A, monthly checks for December 2022. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Commissioner Green.
Yes, sir. I have a few questions about that point. If I remember correctly, that is reflected in the checks. And let me pass you on one piece of what I've got so that it'll make more sense why I'm asking about. Would you please pass that around, sir? My question is in regard to the $900 charge from Taylor Knott.
What page is that? Right here. Oh, you got a highlight. Pretty good. Thank you.
Before you get started, Commissioner Green, I must, there's one thing that's been brought to the attention of the body, that this could be unethical. These charges are incurred because of your suit against the county, and when we've had, our county has had to go seek outside counsel. You're allowed to do that. I'm not telling you you can't, but let me tell you, the, the unethical view of this, of the actual person suing our county has incurred these charges to our county, is now questioning the charge. Go right ahead.
Okay. Now, if you look at the charge down there, if you'll go to the second page of your paperwork, it is the law that the mayor cited when he said he had the authority to hire Mr. Knott. And basically, if you look at number one, your highlighted section, it says, "If there is no county attorney, employ retained counsel." Then it goes on to say that, and we had one, we elected one in September, if my memory serves me correctly.
He had to recuse himself from this.
Well, we still had a county attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
So it should have come to the legislative body. It should not have been, decision should not have been made by the mayor.
You have.
That is the law that backs it up. That's not my opinion.
You've made your point, and Chairman, Commissioner Doty had made a motion. And the last time that we passed, I think maybe 12 to one, I don't recall, maybe 11 to one, I do not recall the actual number. Chairman Doty had made it that we support this.
I do remember, if you'll go to the third page.
Yes, ma'am.
That's attached to that file. It gives you the legal opinion. The question was, do the provisions of TCA 56-112, I pardon, pardon me. Number one, regarding the appointment of a county attorney, supersedes the private acts under which the county attorney, and this one was Hawkins County. The opinion is that the private act governs the employment of a county attorney. Now, by this, and even though you uns voted to pass it, it's not ethical, and it shouldn't have come out of Hamlin County citizens' money.
Thank you, ma'am.
It should have been paid by the mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. I disagree.
Well, you've got a right to disagree, sir.
However, this body had disagreed, and you have your vote, ma'am.
Yes, sir. But in all fairness, and just so that you know, that lawsuit is not against Hamlin County.
Again, that lawsuit is brought Hamlin County into it, and we had to take care of our council outside of our elected county officials.
And let me give you this and pass it around as well, please.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. We, we are sitting here going over stuff that we discussed in the committee. Are we going to do it with committee meetings and do it all right?
Yes, sir. Good point. Good point. Commissioner Green, have you got another point we need to move on?
Yes, sir. I do. Please, please get your packet as it comes around. This one is for the next one. I apologize. Hold on to it. Thank you.
Commissioner, okay, yes. Move to Commissioner Doty.
Only thing I'm going to say about this is I did make that motion, and we extended a vote of confidence towards the county mayor concerning this issue. I think it's moot point. It's really the opinion, and yes, they have the right to say that opinion, but to say that everyone else on this commission is wrong when only one person feels the other way, in my opinion, and I'll have to say this, is wrong in itself.
Thank you, Commissioner Doty.
That's not my opinion, sir. May I speak?
Out of order.
Okay. May I speak?
Out of order, you have had your piece. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Let's move on. We have a, we have a motion. We have a second. Any other discussion? Let's vote this motion, please. Let's vote this motion, please.
Twelve yeas, one nay.
Motion passes. Chairman Hahn.
Item eight B, agreement between Hamlin County, Tennessee, and Microvote General Corporation. And I put that in form of a vote, a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Let's vote this motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, zero nay.
Motion passes. Chairman Hahn.
Item eight C, contract for court fines and fees collection services with Purdue Brandy. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we do have a second. Is there any discussion? Let's vote this motion, please.
Twelve yeas, one nay.
The motion passes.
Item eight D, accident claim settlement in the amount of $1,247, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion. Uh, excuse me, Commissioner Walker.
Question. I wasn't here when we discussed this in committee.
Yes.
So does this relieve Hamlin County from any more liability towards, towards accident?
Yes, it's a full release.
Okay.
Clear? Anyone else? Let's vote this motion, please.
Twelve yeas, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item eight E, resolution 2301, is a resolution to transfer funds from general purpose school funds to federal projects funds for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023, for $500,000. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Let's vote this motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, zero nay.
That motion passes.
Item eight F1, Hamlin County Board of Education Budget Amendment Number Three, an increase of $600,000, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Twelve yeas, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item eight F2, Fund 101, General Administration Projects, $418,050, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote this motion. Commissioner Hahn.
Thirteen yeas, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item eight F3, Fund 101, Public Safety Project, $71,678, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, zero nay.
And the motion passes.
Eight Giddy, Oak Tree Plaza Purchase, authorizing County Mayor Bill Britton to continue with negotiations. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Let's vote this motion, please.
Twelve yeas, one nay.
Motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Public Services Committee Chairman Mike Richardson, you're recognized, sir.
Thanks, sir. Nine A, surplus items for accessory property. This is some office equipment. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Thirteen yeas, zero nay.
Motion carries.
Nine B, Resolution 23-02, it's a resolution authorizing Hamlin County to make a 2023 Community Development Block Grant Application. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Thirteen yeas, zero nay.
And this motion passes.
Nine C, Resolution 23-03, Resolution to amend the Hamlin County zoning resolution for development standards for sanitary landfills. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, zero nay.
Motion carries.
Item nine D, Resolution 23-04, Resolution by Hamlin County, Tennessee, to abandon all interest in Grigsby Road. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Let's vote this motion, please.
Thank you.
Thirteen yeas, zero nay.
Motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Richardson. All right, Chairman, could you please update us on the noise ordinance? As we left our committee 10 days ago, we were looking for some more information. Could you update us, please?
Yes, sir. I have sent emails out and have had no response yet. We're waiting on some information to come back from CTAAS to the Charles Curtis, who's been working with us, and he just hasn't gotten that yet. So right now, we're just in a holding pattern until we, until we get that information and review it.
Thank you, Chairman Richardson. Item number 10, Rules Review Committee Chairman Bobby Hahn, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, sir. Item 10A, concerning public comments, to combine public comments for agenda and non-agenda items and place them as second item on the regular calendar. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We need a second before comments. We have a second. Yes, sir, Commissioner Doty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, my, when I thought about this and rolled it over for the last 10 days, one thought kept coming to mind is new constituents, new residents of Hamlin County that come to our meetings. They don't have to be new for the county, but just the first time they've come. They're not going to look up what the rules are or anything else. They're going to come wanting to speak because they think they can speak their mind. If we only have the one time, and they don't sign the list prior to the meeting, then they won't be able to speak until a month later. I think we need to keep it as the two separate segments. And if they want to combine with agenda and non-agenda items, do them both at both meetings, or at both sessions of the comments. It just, I feel that if they want to speak, they should have the right the first time they come without having to hinder themselves to come back to a second meeting. And yes, we can have a little sign there that says, you know, sign in if you want to speak, but how many times do we all walk into a place of business and not read every little sign that's there? We could have someone stand there for the first six months. What happens three years from now when somebody comes? So please consider that when you make your vote.
Thank you, Commissioner Doty. Commissioner Howell, you are recognized.
Yes, sir. I agree with Commissioner Doty, and also the gentleman from Three Springs Road. Thank you, sir. If it isn't broke, we don't need to fix it. And we need, we learn an awful lot from our constituents who come forward and tell us about the granddaughter who isn't sleeping, the three dogs that are barking, the trash falling down the hill, and things that I don't see on my road. And I, they voted us in, and we need to hear from them. So most of them are to express concerns, and I feel like we, like I say, it's not broke, so let's leave it alone and hear from our constituents. Thank you.
Commissioner Harville?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to amend this motion, that public comments on non-agenda items only be moved to Section Two, but be labeled as Two A, with speakers being allotted three minutes each. And then public comments on agenda items only be labeled as Two B, with speakers being allotted three minutes each. This keeps our two sections. It does move them to the front of the meeting, but it keeps our two sections and still allows us to have two separate times to hear them.
Let me make a note here, please, before I repeat.
I think so, too.
Okay, what we have, folks, we have an amendment that has been brought forth. We have amendment, and we need a second to that amendment. And the amendment is that we change our original motion to include a Two A, general comments, allowing three minutes per speaker. And once that section is done, then we immediately go to Two B for agenda items only, three minutes per speaker. Is that correct?
That's correct.
We have a motion. Do we have, hold on just a second. I'm trying to figure if we need to take up the amendment or allow public comments to, I mean, our speaking to continue. Let's go ahead and vote this motion off the board, please, this amendment, and this amendment that Commissioner Harville has brought. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes, I think it's a compromise.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. We have Commissioner Howell with a second. Is there any discussion on the amendment to the original motion?
Chairman Cutshaw.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to postpone this at least 30 days, and let me give you my reason why. When we first started this out last month, none of our paperwork was on the web page, the Hamlin County web, for any citizen to be. Therefore, half of them are in the dark. They have no idea. And for the sake of accountability and transparency, it should be there for them to be able to know what was coming up.
Yes, ma'am. You're, you're-
It is only fair.
You have that vote, ma'am. You do, and the rest of commissioners have their vote here. We'll see where that goes. Thank you, ma'am. Is that all you need?
No. I had requested to speak as well.
Well, you can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. The two current comment sections for Hamlin County meetings are not broken, so why try to fix them? I firmly believe in listening to the comments of the Hamlin County citizens in committee and commission meetings. I believe in listening, even though I am the target of criticism that occurred on December 5th, 15th, when former Commissioner Jim Stepp spoke during public comments, that I should close my business, Phoenix Towant, or resign my seat. Although he attacked me and falsely quoted Tennessee County Commissioners Director Charles Curtis, I will stand up for Mr. Stepp's right to address the concerns and the right of all citizens about their concerns in the current form. As it stands now, it would give them the opportunity to speak twice. I do not support combining the two comment periods because that will cause confusion as well as cut time provided for comments and hype. As you know, again, no documents were posted in January to show any of this that was coming up. Our citizens are in the dark. And when running for the seat in District 14, I stated I would ask questions, I would push for answers. My question to those commissioners who are pushing for these cuts to public comments, did you tell the voters in your district during the May 22 primary and the August 22 general election that you would vote to combine the two three-minute public comment opportunities into one three-minute public comment opportunity? I request this statement be put into the record.
It will be in our minutes. Mr. Walker.
I think we should have the two different times for people to speak. We want to hear from our public. Yes, we have people that call us on the phone. We have people that show up here. Our whole thing that we need is more people to come here and speak to everybody. When somebody just calls us at home, we only get their side, and then you only get the story that we want to say. We need to have more people from the audience and from our community come to our meetings and speak to us. So I think by limiting the time or taking away part of that time, we're not giving them the opportunity to speak. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hahn?
Thank you. Let me first off, start by saying, it may come as a surprise, where this suggestion came from. Although Mr. Cutshaw and myself were accused of that, it didn't come from either one of us. We took suggestions from all of our members up here. This was one that was brought out. Now, we put it in committee, we discussed it, and it passed, and it come to the regular commission. But we've got some really good ideas here that I can support 100%. And I want to tell you right now, no matter what anybody's circulating around or saying, nobody on the county commission is trying to squelch the public. The idea behind moving the section at the end of the public meeting, at the end of the commission meeting, to the first was so anybody coming in that wanted to make a general comment would not have to sit here for an hour or two to wait to speak. We were trying to convenience the public, not to disarm them. We weren't trying to keep them from speaking. We were actually trying to make it easier for them to have an opportunity to speak. And that's why we wanted to move the comments to the first of the meeting. They can come in and state what they want to state, and then if they need to leave or want west to leave, they can. They've done what they came for. So that was the whole intent behind this. It was never to squelch anybody. I believe in the First Amendment, even though it doesn't apply here. I believe in all the citizens having an opportunity to speak. And no, when I was campaigning, I didn't campaign and tell people we were going to cut out one of the public's meeting sections. I doubt anybody in here told their public, we're going to give you two times to speak. We're not going to change it. It probably wasn't brought up. But it was brought up, and this is an issue that we're talking about. This is, this is something that was brought to me as chairman of the Rules Committee, and that's what we voted on. And that's why we're here right now. But I think you'd be surprised who brought this up to the committee. But we're not here to damage anybody. We're here for the public. That's what we want.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Howell?
Yes. Thank you for those remarks, Mr. Hahn. That's good to know, because if I'm following your amendment, Commissioner Harville, what we're doing is just moving it. And so nobody has to stay here and sit through all-
Right. That is correct.
That, that's, that's a compromise. Yeah, we're not shortening anybody's time. They still get three minutes and blah, blah, blah. Good question.
Any more discussion?
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that three minutes for each section, then, with no limit on the time?
That was his motion. That was his amendment.
Thank you, sir.
And we're about to vote that amendment. That amendment, let's restate the amendment. The amendment is Chairman Harville, or Commissioner Harville has suggested amendment to the motion that we have a Two A for general comments, three minutes per speaker, and also Item Two B, agenda items only, three minutes per speaker. That is our amendment to our main motion. We've got a motion, we've got a second. Let's vote this off the board, please.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Thomas Stoney?
Aye.
Ed Nigre?
No.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Warner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Peggy How?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed? Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Colin Walker?
Yes.
Okay, the amendment passes, so now let's go back and vote the original motion. We're combining public comments, agenda, that all has been changed. So, basically, we are now going to do this on the board with our amendments. Item 10A, according to Stan Harville's amendment.
Now, that is the amendment. That's what we're voting on.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And there's more to, you know, we have other items to discuss, but in this particular item, yes, ma'am, we are creating a 2A and a 2B, three minutes per, each person has three minutes per-
Yes, sir. And if somebody wanted five, they can do the regular-
No, ma'am, that is not part of this motion. No, ma'am. Commissioner Doty?
I've just got one question. Is this going to still contain the sign-in sheet that everyone prior to the meeting will have to sign in that they want to speak?
Let's get to that. That's coming up here in just a moment, I do believe. It's Item 10D, and we'll cover that at the very bottom.
Right.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Ahern, you're recognized.
I'm just making sure that we're getting ready to vote. We just voted in the amendment, so now we're going to vote-
The amendment now comes a-
To follow through with the amendment. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. The amendment now becomes the motion, and we will vote that now as our regular calendar We have a motion, we have a second. Is that all you had, Commissioner? Yes. Any more discussion? Let's vote this motion, please.
Well, we ain't one day.
Motion passes. Chairman Hahn?
Item 10B, citizens wanting to address the county commission during the public comment section must state their name and address, amended under Item D, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Howell.
Yes, sir, thank you. So, if we, if they just have, I would have to say 504 Howell Road. I couldn't just say Howell Road or-
Just your address.
Just my address, like my mailing address.
All right. If you'll take note of the regular calendar, that part as well is about to be amended.
Okay, so-
He attached that to B when he spoke just then.
He did?
Yes.
Okay. He attached, hold on, folks, let's make sure all minds are clear here. The way this reads, citizen wanting to address the county commission during public comments section must state their name and address. And we have an amendment under four, I mean, 10D, that citizens can have a sign-in sheet. So, let's open that up for discussion. Commissioner Green. Your reg- Yeah, Commissioner Green.
I need to ask a question first before I run my mouth. We discussed, or used to, before you do this, you were allowed to complete a form and run it through the mayor's office.
Yes, ma'am.
Where can I ask that question and it not cause a problem?
We've not actually taken that part up yet, but our motion has been to allow three minutes per speaker, and we have not included requests for five minutes.
So, as of right now, they're not taking that away, correct?
No, ma'am, that is gone.
That is gone.
Yes, ma'am.
So, they'll no longer be allowed to pull the form from the mayor's office and submit it to have five minutes?
That is correct. This will supersede that. Any other discussion? Commissioner Howell?
Yes, sir. So, what you're asking about is the five minute. So, it just means your sentences are shorter and quicker. You've got three minutes to say the business that needs to be brought forward. And I agree with the folks that came earlier and said that, you know, it does take a lot of gumption to get up here and say something, and so, I regret losing the five, but-
Ma'am.
I like the compromise of the meeting early. And being, having the name, if we put the name, you know, if we put, if you write it down on a sheet of paper, do you have to come up and announce it?
No, ma'am. We can discuss that part, to my understanding, or how I would think that it would work. If you have a sign-in sheet that you come in, you state your name. We've not actually put into form yet exactly how that is, but name, address, maybe even your district, if you could. So, your commissioner could be alerted as far as that. But that does not have to be publicly noted. That was the compromise that came because there was the suggestion that others didn't want to state their name and address. You know, I'm indifferent to that. I can take that either way, as far as my concerns, whatever the body pleases on this. You know, do you want the sign-in sheet, or would you rather continue the practice of having them state their name and address? That is the issue. We can amend that, we can, however you want. But the motion on the floor currently is to have a sign-in sheet.
So that, and since we're having it as number two, the public speaking, 2A, 2B, so that means we're going to get that sign-in sheet. If you're late-
Well, okay.
You don't want to be late.
Commissioner Howell, we're going to do our best to honor-
Yes, sir, of course.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And as Commissioner Doty has pointed out, they could be late. They could not know what's going on. And, you know, I do believe in latitude and working, and we're not here, as Commissioner Hahn had said, we're not here to squelch the public. We have a motion on the floor. Thomas Doty, you are recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just my one, my one comment on it, is I would like to see us, as you said, have some leeway with the sign-in sheet, if it goes forward, to the fact that people that don't know the rules of the body for time period or for whatever may come, could ask for an exemption and still be allowed to speak at that meeting. That being said, we don't need some of those that, as I've used the past, that have the theatrical productions that they often bring forth, to use that every time to, just to push us. So, I'd like for anybody that's got any ideas on how we could do that, to allow the general public that just don't know to be able to still speak, but to limit the abuse of it.
I think we can make it a matter of the body if-
But how would we word that? I think that might be something to bring up as an amendment to this for future meetings of the Rules Review Committee. It's something for commissioners to think about because, as we all know, we'll have some, and it's with any thing that gets done, any rule, any organization, you'll always have some that try to abuse, and you'll have some that use it for its necessity.
Yes, I agree. So, your point is that we should vote this motion and bring back an amendment? What's your idea?
Well, sir, I think that it is a good idea for those that want to limit the exposure of their address and such as that. We've discussed that, that was the reason behind, so you could call their name out. But I'd like to see it still open to be that if those that want to just come up and address could do so as well, with the understanding that they are after those that have signed in, and the 30-minute time limit will be observed. So, I think that would be one way to keep people from abusing said ruling, but still have the ability to come up and speak as an open.
All right.
So, with that being said, I'd like to amend this to say that there'll be a sign-in sheet at both the front and the back. Those citizens, constituents that wish to speak, that do not want to say their complete name and address, can sign in on those sheets. And those sheets will be given to the chairman prior to the meeting, and he will call those names out for comment. Those that want to come and address the commission without putting their name and address on said form will verbally provide their name and address.
Okay. We have an amendment presented. We have an amendment presented for Item 10B. Do we have a second to that amendment? I will restate the amendment. He's asked that we provide two ways for a public to come to us. Number one, that you have a sign-in sheet. Those items, those folks will go first. Those that come afterwards that can still approach this body, but they will state their name and address at the podium and go after those that have signed in. We have a motion. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
We have a second. Now, we've got more discussion. Yes, let's go with Commissioner Long. I'm sorry, Colin Walker, you're up.
I'm getting confused on this.
Yeah, let's clear it up. Let's clear it up.
Okay. So, are we voting, are we voting on stating the name, or are we voting on the time limit?
We are voting on stating the name.
That's it. That's all we're voting on right now.
That is correct. We have not covered the time limit. We have not-
An address, okay.
That's right. That's right.
And then we have the amendment, that is, they can do their name or sign in the sheet. If they're late, they can just state their name. If they're early, they can do the sign-in sheet.
Yes.
But there's no time limit on this right now.
No, we have not taken that up yet.
Okay, okay. That's what I'm trying to understand where it says-
We have not taken that up yet.
Amendment to D. I just want to make sure we're not voting on D, we're voting on B.
Amendment to B as- Are you, is that good?
Yep.
Commissioner Long?
I guess my point would be more towards D, but we live in a tech-savvy world. Why can we not have on our Hammond County site a place for them to check on the site, register, and us have that way before-
Right.
The check-in sheet back here. Still have it back here for people. But it would be a way that someone could go in. We live in a tech-savvy world. I don't know why we can't do that. It's just something to look into.
Absolutely, and I think that warrants looking into. I don't know that that's something we take up tonight. Commissioner Richardson?
It may be irrelevant now, but if we pass something and we want to do something different next, doesn't it not take a two-thirds vote to change-
That is correct. That is correct. Parliamentary procedure is, after we adopt as a majority rule, it will take two-thirds of the body to change or amend once adopted.
Where I was going with this, we've had so many amendments to the amendments to the amendments. It acts, it's almost as if we're unsettled with what we're trying to do.
Right.
And if we make a decision today and want to change it, it's a different process next time.
That is correct. And once it's, once it's brought in, that is correct. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, sir. It kind of, in following Commissioner Richardson's thought there, in following Commissioner Green, you know, we've got the A and the B, right? That's in the books.
No, ma'am, we're still on B.
We're still on B? Okay. It kind of begs to-
2A and 2B.
2A and 2B. Yeah, we got that. Okay. Then, you know, it might behoove us to put this off a dash and say, "Well, wait a minute. Let's think this all out." Anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Green?
Thank you, sir. I'd like to make a motion that you put it out for 30 days to give folks a chance to get settled. Evidently, I'm not the only one that's torn between different decisions in here.
We will meet before 30 days. Would you like to amend that motion?
Throw it back to committee.
For February?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, please. I'd like to amend that motion to put this off to the February-
Hang on.
Committee meeting, and I think it's 13th, but let me double-check and make sure I'm not lying.
Committee meetings are the 13th.
February the 13th, committee meeting, and I would like to see every bit of this put online so folks know exactly what is coming up, so that we are transparent and accountable.
Your motion is that we put this off until our committee meeting on February 13th, correct?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
We have a motion. Do we have a second to that motion? It's off the board, please.
Ms. Chairman, we already have a motion and a second on the floor.
Yeah, we do, we do. And I didn't know if that superseded that. We do have an amendment and- Sir, attorney, do we-
Committee table the first vote, and then call both your bodies to attend to the 13th.
Thank you, sir. Can we do that?
Yes, I'll take attorney's vice and table the first motion.
All right. Our amendment has been tabled, and now we will take up Commissioner Green's motion to suspend further items, discussion until our February committee meetings. Do we have a second on that?
Yes.
How do you do it?
Yes, sir.
Sir.
Commissioner Howell is seconding. Let's vote that motion, please. It's off the board. Yes, it is off the board.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Ed Nigre?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Warner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Peggy Powell?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Colin Walker?
Yes.
And the motion passes, and for all minds clear, we have created tonight Section 2A, general comments, three minutes per speaker. Section 2B, agenda items only, three minutes per speaker. That is created, and to amend that motion there, it will take a two-thirds body to do so.
Please repeat that for me. I think I misunderstood it. Please repeat what you said.
We have already voted and placed into the record Item 2 on our regular calendar. 2A will be general comments, three minutes per speaker. 2B, agenda items only, three minutes per speaker. That is the only business that has been concluded tonight in our Rules Committee. So, all minds clear on that. We will take this up again in our committee meetings as far as rules. Chairman Hahn, we're going to suspend the rest of that. Is that okay?
That sounds very good. Yes.
Well, yeah, let's rescind all that for the moment. We accepted the motion to further discuss and clear up this up. Got a big problem? All right, we will move now to Section 11, public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone that would like to address this commission? You have three minutes to do so. Time out, please. We have a problem here we need to address before we time. Do we need to all abstain or something, or get it off the board?
No, I'll work with it. We're going to time it.
Okay, all right. Yes, ma'am.
Lyndon Oejo Stevens Road, I think it's devastating that you went ahead and passed a change which puts, again, agenda comments and general comments at the beginning.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. It says on the agenda, and I do appreciate your understanding that, and you know the rules as much as I do, but that it says an agenda item. This is for general comments of non-agenda items.
I'm going to talk about something that's already been passed.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not talking about it before it passes.
And this is on the agenda tonight. We're looking for non-agenda items. Have you got a comment for non-agenda items? Have you got a comment for non-agenda items?
This stinks.
Thank you for your comments.
You should... There is no... You have not concluded your meeting. I would suggest someone make a motion to reconsider the vote that you took on 10A and postpone it as well. This... Yeah, yeah, yeah. This has been...
You're out of order, ma'am. You're out of order again. Ms. Noe, you are out of order. We have...
Take me out.
No, ma'am. That's not my intention. You're out of order.
Well, then quit gaveling and just let me speak.
Because you're out of order. If we want to protect order of our body, we're doing our best to learn and grow. You're out of order.
Well, let me say something about, and you can go ahead and gavel me on this one too. I heard a comment tonight that we approved what the mayor did in hiring Arthur Knight, even though you know it's wrong. Thank you. Thank you. That is amazing to me that an officer of the court or of this county commission would say, "It doesn't matter what the statute says. We approved what the mayor did." You approved violating state...
Ma'am, you are...
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman. Second.
We have some other business.
Chicken, chicken.
Hey, hold on, folks. Keep order, please. Please keep order. Is there anyone else that'd like to address this commission? I feel we've been fair. Folks...
Chairman Cutshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, before you do your announcements, I was the guinea pig of the last meeting for the public comments, and please pass that around. That's for Mr. Curtis to clarify that things were misrepresented, and I am in the coyer with the Tennessee law and the charges that were made about me resigning as commissioner or selling my Tony Caddy.
Yes, ma'am, and...
Now, now, wait a minute. Just a minute, please, sir. If you don't care, give me time. And I'd like for you to have that. That clears that up as well as to what was told on me, that I was the cause of the lawsuit. That is the memo. That is the email from Yeager &amp; Brown to Mayor Britton clarifying the reason Arthur Knight was hired. I want to be transparent and accountable, but I do not like being accused of being dishonest. Now, that clears me. Please look at it. I know some of you think that it's not important, but I believe in ethics, and I believe in transparency. Now, I want to do what's right, but that is clarification of what was said and done. And that gentleman had every right, let me tell you again, every right to view his concerns. And I, for one, will get up and fight for his rights, even if though that I was the subject of the attack. Now, not one of you spoke of, and that's fine. That's your... You're right. I don't fight with you of your rights. We'll fight for the rights of my children and the citizens of my district. But we need to be forthright with this. Our citizens need the right to speak. I don't... I still say, "It's not broken." I don't know why you want to fix it. I don't know why you want to limit time. I want to hear from people to know what's wrong, and that's the only way I know. I had one this week about a mess on the side of the road, and I didn't know it if they hadn't contacted me, is my point.
Okay, that... Commissioner Green, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity, sir.
Take just a minute, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, we're going to go around the horn, because I want all minds clear.
Yes, sir.
My only one thing is this letter that Ms. Green, or email copy, from the Lowell-Yeager &amp; Brown Law Firm is merely an opinion of one attorney, and there's other attorneys that gave us the opinion that we needed to seek legal counsel. So with that being said, as with a lot of the things that were brought up about legal matters, they're merely opinions, and opinions vary. And we did extend the vote of confidence to the mayor on behalf of him hiring that on the recommendation of an attorney.
Thank you, sir.
Can I clarify?
No, ma'am. You've had your opportunity.
That was from Cap's attorney, not somebody else.
I understand. We're going to try to be fair to everyone and give everyone a chance.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone else? Folks, I have to address something tonight, and then it pains me to do this, is something that I thought in ten days probably ought to handle something. Social media. I'm not a fan of social media because so much of it is hyperbole, so much of it is gaslighting statements, half-truths, misinformation, partial truths. And it's brought to my attention more than once this week. It was sent to me. I'm going to read the statement. Chairman Cutshaw made the remark that the commission did not have to allow the citizens to speak. I did say that. I did say that. But, folks, if y'all remember, we've been in three different... I started to pass this off, and then I realized this person was in the same meetings that I was in, and there was more information than just allowing the public to speak. It's not a right. It's a privilege, and this body has never intended not to extend that privilege. So this gaslighting statement has came to me this week more than one way, and I'm not very happy about it because it was misleading, hyperbole, gaslighting statement. All I'm saying, Commissioners, I've never intended that we not have public comments. I think it's dishonest. It's not transparent. It's a half-truth, which means it's a half lie. That said, any other comments? Thank you all very much. We're adjourned.
That's not my opinion. That's from Yeager &amp; Brown.
Appreciate it.